Thanks everyone for coming out tonight for our Meet the Candidates event. First off, my name is Josh Walker. I'm the president of the Pleasant Grove-Linden Chamber of Commerce. And we're excited to be able to host this event and partner up with DoTERRA. In fact, let's give a round of applause to DoTERRA for hosting us tonight. All right, well, you've had a chance to do a little bit of a meet and greet with the candidates out in the hall. And hopefully you were able to meet each person, ask them a few questions. They will be available for a short time after the debate as well. And so when everything concludes this evening, we'll excuse them back to their tables. And that's where you'll be able to find them to track them down. So just to get started, again, thanks for coming out. We'd like to start. My chamber member, Jake Hoyt with Rock Canyon Bank, he got caught in traffic. He just let me know. So I've asked Mayor Daniels if he would come and give us a prayer. Following that, we'll have Seth Holdaway, who is a member of the Chamber with America First Credit Union. He will lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. And then we will have the Miss Pleasant Grove royalty grace us with their rendition of the Star Spangled Banner. And we'll go to that point. Mayor, if you would come.
Our Father in Heaven, we are gathered tonight as citizens of this great community. And we are grateful to be citizens of this nation. And we thank Thee for the opportunity that we have to assemble in freedom and to speak our minds and be heard by others and also to hear. We ask Thee tonight to bless these fine men and women who have put themselves forward to offer to serve, that they will be supported and that they will be clear in their thinking and be able to answer the questions that are provided and do so so they can put their best foot forward. And may we, as an audience, listen and make our decisions accordingly. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight? Or the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? Or the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Thank you so much, especially the Miss Pleasant Grove royalty for sharing that with us. I know they need to leave, some of them at least. But I really appreciate that. Love that high note, by the way. So our moderator tonight is John Dougal. He is the state auditor. And the Chamber felt it was important to get a moderator that is unbiased in his opinion towards what's happening in Pleasant Grove. And so John, I think, fits that. He doesn't live in Pleasant Grove, right?
Highland.
Highland.
Far.
And he kind of has a thing for numbers. Being the state auditor, he has a lot of information about things that are happening throughout the state. And so we have had him as a moderator in American Fork for debates and asked him, and he kindly accepted the invitation. And he's been state auditor now since November -- well, he was elected November 6, 2012, and took office January 7, 2013, and then was re-elected, was it just last year? And so obviously, people feel like he's doing a decent job. And again, he has been involved in the political arena. I actually first met John, he was serving on the American Fork Chamber Board of Directors. And when I first got involved with the American Fork Chamber, I was able to collaborate with him on some different projects there. And so we really appreciate him being able to come out today. And without further ado, I will have John come up and he will explain the rules of engagement to both our audience and our candidates that are running for city council. Again, remember, this is a primary election. And so out of these eight people, the eight people that are running, I believe four people will make it through to the general election. And you should have now received in the mail your ballot. This year is a little different. All voting is going to be done via mail. And so you will fill out your ballot, put it in the mail, and then I believe it's the county that will be in charge of counting the ballots. Is that correct, candidates? John knows. And so we're glad you're able to come out and hear what these candidates each have to say. So with that, I will turn the time over to John.
Well, it's great to be with you tonight. You guys ready for a debate? Come on. We don't want you to sleep already to start with. Okay, so the first set of rules, Josh has a timer right there, and he should indicate when your time is close to elapsing. As the time elapses, if you'll join me in applause to politely cut off the candidate and encourage that we move on to the next person. We're going to start with introductory remarks. We drew randomly for seating and speaking order. For introductory remarks, each candidate has two minutes. We're going to start here with Jeffrey, and we'll work our way down the table. And you can either speak from the podium here or speak from there. Two minutes each.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jeffrey Butler. I stood up so that I could see the people that are over here that I would be blocked by. So I live in Pleasant Grove. I've been here for 12 years with my wife and five children. I enjoy the opportunity to serve you as citizens. I'm pleased to see that this many people are here, honored and humbled at the opportunity to serve, a little intimidated, to be honest with you, because this is where government works. You have a voice. You have a voice that is directly affecting you and your neighbors and the community. And I want to serve the community. I want the opportunity to listen to you and to hear what you have to say. Being here for 12 years, I've been able to know and understand and see what the community has been for such a long time. I grew up in Midvale, Utah. And when I was growing up in Midvale, Utah, there were some planning issues that caused it to fall behind. And it was very, very frustrating to see what happened because Sandy, Murray, West Jordan, they were just growing and expanding in a lot of revenue, and it was just awesome for them. And Midvale was left behind only until recently. And so, you know, seeing the opportunity that is here and for my family, when we want to go and eat, when we want to go and buy things, we're always going to American Fork, Provo, Orem, Linden, Salt Lake, in fact, because just, you know, we don't have a lot of options here in Pleasant Grove. We would love to stay in Pleasant Grove. My daughter, she works at Cravings Bistro, and we love it. We want to see Pleasant Grove become what it can become for the benefit of the entire community. So thank you for the opportunity. Look forward to answering questions.
I currently serve on our city council. It is an honor to be here with you tonight. Thank you for coming. I'd like to begin by expressing my appreciation to DoTERRA for hosting this event. DoTERRA has been a tremendous community partner for our city. They are really fantastic. They've been very gracious for me when I've reserved this theater in the past, and they just do tremendous things for Pleasant Grove. We're lucky to have them. I'd also like to express my thanks to Josh Walker and the Pleasant Grove-Linden Chamber of Commerce. They're doing remarkable things for businesses and the economic base here in Pleasant Grove. They're doing great things. They're making really professional videos. I've been very impressed. And of course, express my thanks to John Dougal, John Frugal-Dougal, for being willing to be our moderator. His office has been in the news a lot recently, showing the gold standard of what can happen when you have elected officials that have a true servant's heart, who work hard, who are willing to do what's right, stand up for what's right, and bring awareness to issues that are important in our community. So thank you to everyone that's helping make this happen, and thank you to each of you for coming. I grew up in the United States Air Force. My father was a lieutenant colonel in the U.S. Air Force, and so I grew up moving around a lot, have lived a lot of different places. That has helped me learn to adapt and learn to make connections quickly. I've lived all over the world. But I went to school at BYU. I met my beautiful wife there, fell in love with the woman of my dreams there at BYU. She's heavily involved, plays in our Pleasant Grove Orchestra, has served in Valley View PTA. She's been involved in the Utah County Arts Board. She and I both serve in Rotary Club. I'm the president of the Utah County Rotary Club. I've served on our city council for four years, have been a great advocate for the taxpayer, have been very involved in our city services, have been on a number of different boards. I've got materials out, have my table that you can read that describes some of the boards and commissions I've served on, some of the good that I feel like we've accomplished. I found that a group of volunteers called the Pleasant Grove Ambassadors to Business that focuses on bringing in economic development, been a great champion for that cause. I'm grateful for the support of so many good people. You can read a lot about me on my website, voteben.com. If you remember nothing else from tonight and the debate, remember to check out voteben.com and then remember to vote Ben. Thanks.
My name is Nathan Stoker. My name is Nathan Stoker. Oh, I turned it off, sorry. There we go. Sorry about that. My name is Nathan Stoker. For the past two years, I've been operating the Pleasant Grove Debate Forum, trying to be able to find ways to bring together people's ideas and to try to be able to find common grounds to work with. I think it's important as a city that we find the underlying problems that we have with each other's views in order to find the basis behind what they want to accomplish. The more we can do this, the more we can collect those ideas, the better we can come together with a solution to our problems that we can all agree with. There's a lot of discord and a lot of things going online, and a lot of people in the city don't understand even what's going online. So be able to try to find the way to reach out to the most people has been a big goal of mine, to try to find a way to increase that and to be able to try to merge ideas from other people. When I was asked to sponsor the Prop 3 Road Initiative, I knew that roads need to be minimally funded. I know we need to prevent them from falling further behind. And they had a way to try to hold the city to doing at least that much. And so I was more than willing to jump on that. There was a lot of criticism about how we would do that by taking $2.6 million of the budget. And I've heard Benjamin Stanley and other people during the council meetings offer up ideas and things that weren't being looked into as well as I would have liked to. When it was challenged and the city came up with their response, it was a big hit to me because I love the services that are city authors. I love our library. I love our pool. My kids love those services. And to see those things go away would be a huge loss to our community. But by gathering the ideas, I've come up with some plans and some opportunities that we can work together and have a solution that everybody can at least moderately agree to. And it's a collection of the ideas of other people that I've heard. And my reason for running was just to try to bring an option for the citizens to have those ideas on the table. And I'm very grateful for the opportunity to try to serve you and to bring my ideas as well. Thank you.
I'm Diana Anderson, and the reason Nathan didn't stand is because he has had surgery on his foot. So I'm very grateful for the chance to be here. I have been on council for three and a half years, and I've learned a lot. I can hear my granddaughter in the background. I also, just exactly like Ben, my dad was a lieutenant colonel in the Air Force and spent my very young life following him while he served the country. And because of that, exactly like Ben said, we're very flexible. We know how to pick up and move quickly. In fact, on my third anniversary with my husband, I said, "I really don't know what happens now," because I have never had a relationship longer than that. But we got married and we moved to Pleasant Grove in 1991. We have seven children. I have one son and six daughters. My youngest, two twins, just graduated from Pleasant Grove High School. So after, I started in the Alpine School District in 1991, and I have just graduated. I've been there consecutively. So we also, we started a business in 1991 as well. We design and build custom exhibits for trade shows. And we take those trade show booths all over the world, and that's been a wonderful blessing. And because of that, I have some great relationships in the business community. But when we were choosing a place to live, we chose a home three blocks east of the fire station, a block away from the central elementary school, a block away from the library, a block away from the pool. That's why I chose my home. We have been blessed with great neighbors and friends. And the reason I'm running again is that -- I'll let you come.
I don't know. I want to know why you're running. I'm almost willing to yield the time, right? No, my name's Todd Williams, and thank you for being here tonight. You know, I grew up in Sandy and lived there for, I won't even tell you how long, until I got married. Met my high school sweetheart, and we fell in love. And she waited for me while I served a mission. And then we came home, and we had three children here in Utah. And times as it were and finances as it needed to be, we moved to Arizona, to a little town called Gilbert, Gilbert, Arizona. And I fell in love with Gilbert. Gilbert was a great community. And the reason why it was a great community is that it had the things that my kids enjoyed. It had rec center programs, and it had pool programs and sporting events, and it was a great, clean community. And at that time, I kind of thought, you know what? I may try to get involved in city government because we need leaders that understand what makes a community. As I moved back to Pleasant Grove, I started working with Omniture, and we eventually sold to Adobe. Professionally, I work with businesses every day and to not only heal their issues, but to bring economic development to them through, I'm in the technology field. And so I got asked a couple of months ago, "Todd, will you run for city council?" And I said, "I will run for two reasons." And I've shared that with a couple of reasons. But number one is to heal the divide that currently exists between our city and our citizens. And then number two, to bring economic development into the city, to raise our revenues, to fund roads, and to pay for the other necessary needs that we have as a city. Businesses can't be run, or cities can't be run like a business, but I believe that the principles still apply.
I'm Blaine Thatcher, and I've lived here in Pleasant Grove for about 25 years. I've raised my family here in Pleasant Grove, and we've really enjoyed living here. I'm an accountant. I've got an accounting degree from Brigham Young University, and I've worked in the accounting field for the last 32 years. I help businesses manage and control their costs and successfully plan for their growth needs. So I think those are some skills that could be helpful to our city. Like I said, I've really enjoyed Pleasant Grove. It's a beautiful city, and I would like it to remain a wonderful city for a long time to come. Unfortunately, we have allowed our infrastructure to deteriorate in Pleasant Grove, and we've allowed our taxes to increase somewhat significantly. While that has been happening, we have become a fairly divided city. And obviously, that's a bit of a problem. So to be able to resolve these problems, I think we need to be able to have a deep discussion about the budgetary needs of our city. And in order to be able to have that discussion, you have to have willing parties, parties that are willing to sit down at our council table and openly discuss and entertain the other perspectives that are presented. And without doing that, I don't think we're going to be able to bridge the divide.
Do you think I can reach it? I'm Carrie Hammond. I started out in Salt Lake City. I was raised in Salt Lake City. Murray raised my kids in the West Valley, and nine years ago, my husband and I moved to Pleasant Grove City. Huge culture shock at that point, but we absolutely love living in Pleasant Grove and probably for a lot of the same reasons that all of you love living in Pleasant Grove. Nine years ago, when we moved here, it still had a really rural feel, not entirely rural, but a really rural feel. And I experienced a lot, there's like a really common thread along this table, but we also experienced having to go someplace else to some other city to do shopping or particular types of things. Those weren't available readily in Pleasant Grove. And we're seeing a lot of that coming to the city now, which is great because it makes life easier, quite frankly, it does. And it keeps dollars in the city, so it's an economically sound thing to do. We're experiencing a lot of growth right now, and I am a concerned citizen of Pleasant Grove. I live here 24/7. I want to see it continue to be a pleasant place to live. And we're experiencing all this growth now, and I see a lot of it encroaching into places that are mainly residential, which is not necessarily a bad thing. There is a general plan for the city, and it's not a bad one. But there are, I think that there are things that we can do as residents to invite businesses to make a comfortable business environment, to grow economically, but also at the same time protecting and respecting the residents who are here 24/7.
Jeff, let me see if I can get this out of your way a little bit. Maybe, oh, we're stuck right there. Okay, so we're going to move into the next part of our debate. We'll have a round of questions. These are questions that you have written down. I don't know the question until moments before when I draw it out to read it. Hopefully, you have good enough handwriting. I've done this for many years. Sometimes I can't even read them. You'll have a minute and a half for each question. I'm going to ask a few questions that'll go down to everybody, and then I'll ask some questions that'll go in groups of four. So we'll just kind of mix it up that way. The first question, we'll start with you, Ben, and we'll work our way down the table and end with you, Jeffrey. Question number one. Josh, you ready? Minute and a half? Okay. What do you feel the role of a city council person is?
It's a great question, and one of the things that I think is really important for elected officials to understand is the proper role of government. An elected official's job, in my view, and one of the things that a lot of people tell me they very much appreciate about the service that I have rendered over the past three and a half years, is that I see my job as being a servant to the public. You are the bosses. You are in charge as citizens of Pleasant Grove. I have fiduciary obligations to you to make sure that we provide great services, that we do it in fiscally responsible ways, that I treat every tax sent as a sacred trust, that I work with the public, work with the staff as a check and a balance, and to make sure that I follow good, sound principles of governance that will help move our city in the right direction. So the idea that elected officials are here to serve and not to dictate is core to who I am. Abraham Lincoln talked about government of the people, for the people, by the people. That's the proper role of a city council person, is to serve you, to be here to work with you, to do what you need, to answer your questions, to be responsive. A lot of people tell me that they are endorsing and supporting and contributing to my efforts because I have, they've never met a more responsive, a more engaged council person that comes to every ribbon cutting, every ground breaking that's involved at every different level, and always, always quick to respond to your questions and to be there to serve and answer and do what you want done. That's the job. That's what I love doing. Thanks.
So now that he's answered, everybody, do we get the next question? For me, the role of a council person is to, like you said, represent the citizens, make sure that the city is being run in a way that the citizens want it to be run. And now, one particular council person isn't going to always be able to represent every single individual, but their job is to go out and to try to find and get as many of the ideas as they can from the citizens and do their best to represent them. I don't know that there's a whole lot more to say than that.
Oh, perfect.
We'll just keep calling.
Yeah. So before I was on council, I was on Planning Commission, and there was something that I learned profoundly, and that was how important it was to understand the situation of the city, the citizen, and also the applicant. So every week, we have about 10 agenda items, and I find it, I love going to the site that we're going to talk about, and I look at it. I stand there, and I look at who is, who can see this, how is this going to block, how much traffic. So I really enjoy doing my homework. Also, we are sent a packet, and in that packet, we are given information. And then staff, the professionals that we've hired, make recommendations. So I believe my role as a counselor is that I am part of a team that's with the mayor and with the other counselors. I have one vote. And so a problem is thrown on the table, and you'll find each of us coming from a different angle, a different approach, a different background, and we have talked to different people. And the beautiful part of then is that as we discuss that issue, what usually happens is a very good solution. We make better, we make hard decisions for the betterment of the whole city.
Todd, let me interrupt for just a second. Does anybody know how to turn the lights on back up here?
That's okay.
Yeah. I look good in the dark.
Todd.
You know, I, that's a great question. I'm going to look at this a little bit differently. You know, Ben talked about the proper role of government, and I'm a big proponent of and reader of one of our religious leaders who talked about the proper role of government. And I believe that absolutely, wholeheartedly, on a national and even a state level. However, the city level's a little different. You know, we, I look at the city council as a bridge between the city departments and the people. And it's important that the city council members have an understanding of what goes on in the city, speaks to the city administrators, they know what's going on, know what their fears and their doubts and their struggles are, as well as what goes on with the people, what the people, what the will of the people want. So the role of, in my opinion, the role of the city councilman is to be that bridge. And that's absolutely what I've done in business for the past 30 years. I'm an administrator, an executive administrator, bringing not only products and services to the business, but working with employees to make sure that those employees' needs are met and that we retain and grow employees.
I think this question is very, very clear, actually. The role of a council member The role of a council member is to represent the citizens and their interests, and also to be a check and a balance on the government entity itself. Unfortunately, government has a propensity to increase. And so, without appropriate representation, to be a check and a balance on that growth, we tend to see virtually all government entities tend to grow a little too much. So the trick, I think, in representing the citizens and their interests is to apply sound and true principles in the decision-making process. If we're beholden to other interests or special needs or other things, we run the risk of not adequately and properly representing the citizens and their interests. A council member has a fiduciary responsibility to the wise and prudent use of the tax resources given to the city. And so, we have to be very, very careful about that responsibility.
That was long. What was the question? I know what the question was. I was kidding.
I'm here in case you want me to read it.
I really think that the role of a city council person is to provide voice and representation for the citizens of the city they serve. That being said, I also believe that the best kind of government is the one that's closest to the people and the residents who live in the city. I think that what they said and what they said and what they said is also true. You can't run responsible city government without looking at all sides of every issue and making sure that you're serving the city and the public and the people who live here in the best possible way, and finding ways for the economic growth and 24/7 residents that like to see their hometown be the way it always has been, find ways for those interests to coexist and cohabit in the same town. I think it can be done. There's a lot of back and forth these days between...
All of the answers have been really good. It comes down to being the voice of the people, everyone, honestly, especially in a city and in a community. Not one group or two groups, it's the entire city, and have the ability to look forward and plan with the future in mind. Can't dwell on the past. Things have happened, yes. Decisions have been made, yes. When I visit with families in my profession, we can only deal with what is in front of us. We can only look forward. Hard decisions need to be made. And I've seen that with the council. They've had to make hard decisions. And honestly, I don't want to offend anyone, but hard decisions suck. They are hard, and not everyone's going to be happy. But there is a reason that we are a representative government, is to represent all sides and to listen and to talk and to collaborate and to find a middle ground. That's what the role of a city council, especially one that has the ability to grant the mayor the pen, as we do. That's what I feel.
Question number two, we'll start with you, Nathan, and then we'll continue the rotation. If Proposition 3 passes, how will you fund the rec center, the pool, and the library? If Proposition 3 passes, how will you fund the rec center, the pool, and the library?
In a minute and 30 seconds, huh? By diversifying the load in as many sources as we can. We have a great future with us. We've got lots of development that's in the process and is ready to go, and it would be good to use some of that. It'd be good to use some of the money we already have, and it'd also be good to increase the cost of some of the programs we already have. We have subsidies that are going off to some of these programs that are great programs, they're wonderful programs, and they do benefit our city. But we can increase our prices to be competitive with other cities and not overburden our citizens, and let the people who are using the services continue to pay for their services. By diversifying, we can ease the burden on any one particular person. After we've gone through that, we've gone through the budget, and we've gone through and analyzed how we can cut and what the effects of cuts would mean to the budgets. I've often brought up a 3%, 9%, and 18% budget analysis by department of what those cuts would look to the services. Some of those services, we can't cut anything from, and some of them, we might be able to cut a little bit. We show the citizens what we have and what we can do, and then we come to them and ask them for any money we might need to continue to cover the remainder of that. I've got a lot more detail, but that's good for today.
By the way, the only tax increase that's happened in the last four years was a voted tax increase on the Public Safety Building. So, just so that you're aware, that that's been the only tax increase. If it passes, in 13 weeks, Pleasant Grove has a chance to send a mandate to the council, the mayor and council. And it will be very serious. The day after the election will be a very serious day. What's going to happen if it passes is that $2.6 million will be coming out of the general fund and will be placed into roads. It has to be spent that year. We don't have a starting date. There is no date on the initiative that says when it's going to start. But what's going to happen is that to replace the services that will be cut from the general fund will cost about $18 per resident or per home per month. That will be a property tax increase. So you can do an $8 road fee, vote no, and an $8 road fee, or you can vote yes and have a vote later of $18 a month to replace that was coming out of the general fund. So $8 road fee, $18 property tax.
You know, one of the worst decisions, I think, we can make as a city and as a population is to just blanket allocate a percentage or even a dollar amount to anything, whether that be roads or whether that be, you know, anything that we have. Now, the reason why that's a reckless and dangerous proposition is none of us would ever do that in our personal lives, in our businesses. We would never just strictly allocate $2.6 million, almost 20% of our city budget, to do that. So what would I do ultimately to fund the rec center is we would have to pass a road fee. It's going to cost the citizens more money. And that's why I am not a proponent of Proposition 3. I believe that we can, through economic development and through a decreasing transportation utility fee, TUF, that can be decreased over a period of time to eliminate those costs to the city. I am absolutely for smaller governments and smaller taxes. And when we strictly allocate a percentage of our budget, it's not the way to go.
the budget. It's just absolutely necessary. We seem to be avoiding it as a city because we're convinced that we can't reduce spending anywhere. However, over the last five years, we've increased spending in all departments except roads over $3 million. That's just new monies coming in. So when we look at other cities, they've been able to reduce spending when they have big things coming up, they know they want to plan for something. Linden did it before they did their Public Safety Building, and they didn't reduce any services. American Fork has done it. Highland has done it. Provo has done it. So it's clear that we actually can reduce our spending without closing these services. We have to deal with the priorities first. Our problem is we have been dealing with the needs and wants that we like rather than the primary essential services first. So we have to do those first, and I would take a clearly significant look at our existing budgets, roll back spending as we can, and if then we still are short, that's the time to approach the citizens about a tax increase, not before we do our budget review.
Well, I think that one of the main things that governments everywhere should do is provide infrastructure. And roads, we need roads. However, I don't think that I'm valiant in favor of tying the city council's hands with Prop 3, as far as that goes, and tying up that much of the general fund. I have looked at the city's three-year plan for roads, and I think that it seems reasonable to me. As a resident of Pleasant Grove, it seems reasonable to me. I have heard different numbers bouncing around between $4 and $10 for a road fee. I do have a little bit of apprehension about that as well, because I have seen secondary water services go that way, and that has been a thing in my world. And they tend to just be increasing when it was supposed to be a certain way. And so, that can happen. But I actually think that it's the city's responsibility to fund roads. I think that the city will fund roads. I think there are ways to get that done without tying our hands and without cutting services. I also think that some things...
So how will things get funded if Proposition 3 passes? Well, unfortunately, the fees would have to increase, costs to the citizens would have to increase, and hope that they continue to come to PG versus going to Linden and American Fork and other places. You'd have to lay off people. It'd come down to citizens losing their jobs. The costs would ultimately be passed to the people, just no other way. We could beg and plead for help from the local businesses to help fund, but as Highland and Provo were brought up, Highland is proposing an $18.50 road fee. Provo has had a road fee. So that's, you know, that's what we would have to do, unfortunately.
So when you analyze a question like, what would you do in a hypothetical if this road initiative, this citizens' initiative, Prop 3, which is called colloquially the Fund Roads First Initiative, if that were to pass, just because no other candidate up here has given a little bit of background, let me take 10 seconds and kind of explain. This was a citizen-born effort to encourage the city council to stop kicking the can with regard to minimally funding our roads. It's actually a $2.2 million remaining gap that needs to be funded based on a study from JUB engineers that the city undertook to figure out just exactly what it would be to start making progress. Right now, our PCI, our pavement condition index, is declining. It's getting worse every year because we're not minimally funding our roads. I have an op-ed piece that I wrote for the Daily Herald. There's a copy of it on my table. I'd love to have you read it. But if that citizen initiative passes, I've heard people at this table say there's either going to be a fee if it doesn't pass or a fee if it does pass. What we need is some compromise. What we need is some working together. There are options as we budget. I get calls all the time from residents who say, I wanted to join a swimming program at our rec center, but we subsidized it so heavily that people from other cities signed up before I got to sign up, and I couldn't even be a part of a program in Pleasant Grove because another city filled it up and it was subsidized so heavily. We could assess user fees. We could look at putting an option before the public in a vote. We could look at budgeting. There's a lot of options. We should explore them all.
Okay, now, we're going to go into the rotation with four candidates. So Diana, we're going to start with you, then Todd, then Blaine, then Carrie. This is your question. What is your stance on high-density housing in our city? Do we need more or less? Many citizens are opposed to it. Do you think it benefits our city, and how?
Well, okay, so for a living, breathing society, it's a town, it's good to have a 20% high density on one end of your life cycle, 20% high density on your other end, which is the end I now qualify for. And that was a sad day, 55-plus. And then the single-family homes in the middle. So when, a year before, when I was on the planning commission, the council at that point put a moratorium on high-density housing. And what it was is we had about 36 units an acre that we were permitting, and we were getting higher on both ends of that high-density, living, breathing place. There was a moratorium for, I think, a year, if I remember correctly. And then at that time, the council passed a 12-unit per acre, and only in specific zones. So from here on forward, because of the moves of the council, high-density, we have fulfilled our obligation for a living, breathing, and high-density is no longer a possibility in town.
You know, as housing prices continue to increase, there's a need for high-density housing. And as a result, we have some. You know, we have, in my opinion, we have enough. But that's following, as Diana said, that's following the city plan, the master plan that's been laid out for the city. And so, you can't just, it's not just, no one's going to put a high-density housing development into your neighborhood. That's not how the master plan works. And so, from my opinion, my stance is that we have enough. It's built out, and that's where my stance is. But I want to use the next 48 seconds to talk a little bit more about that budget. And I guess I can use that time appropriately. But I've reviewed the budget, and I'd be happy to share this with anybody. But this is the Pleasant Grove budget, and I've reviewed it in detail. I can tell you, there's not 18% cuts, as Congressman Stanley has suggested, or even as...
Councilman.
Councilman. What did I say?
Not yet.
All in due time, right then? All in due time.
Thank you for all the support.
Or that Blaine Thatcher says, I don't believe that there's any, well, there's dimes and nickels, there's not dollars or millions.
Well, I guess I've got to question his ability to review a budget, then. So there clearly is money available, and if you would look at the audited financial statements, you'll see a little different track record of where our money has actually been spent.
If you'll please let the candidate speak and continue.
Thank you. To the question, I think we've got enough high-density housing. I think most people tend to feel that. But the problem we have is generally Pleasant Grove has been unfriendly enough to commercial and retail businesses that about the only option we left property owners for a while was to develop high-density housing. And so, consequently, we saw a real proliferation in high-density housing. And the council, despite saying they were not going to approve anymore, they continue to approve more and more. So the other problem you have is that economic development, of course, wants more rooftops, more housing, more bodies in the city to support retail business. So you've got a competing interest there, and you have to be very careful about how you apply this. The other factor is property rights. Property owners have a right to do what they want with their property. And so, our zoning laws have to be able to blend those two interests.
So recently, I have learned, yes, property owners have the right to do what they want with their property, within the general plan of the city. And from my point of view, the short answer is no. I think we have enough high-density housing. And I don't think I need to elaborate on that.
Question number four. We're going to start with you, Jeffrey, then Ben, then Nathan, then Diana. This is kind of long, so let me read it. "There was a recent finding by the State Records Committee, critical of the relationship between Pleasant Grove City and Strawberry Days Association. What would you do differently to better comply with the law and provide transparency?"
I'd like to see that, just so that I have a better idea of what it is. Off the top of my head, though, transparency is important, and we see that on all levels. We like to, we like to see, you know, where our money's going as taxpayers. We like to see and have that accountable to us. It's vital that we know where it's going, and that, as council members, that, you know, we maintain the law as issued and support the law. So, you know, review it, make it transparent. I can't think of anything else. Make sure that we're all compliant with the law, so that there's no issues moving forward.
So I've been a great advocate for transparency. It's one of the fundamental things that will rebuild trust in Pleasant Grove and heal division, is if the city can be trusted to be upfront and open with information, and the public gets the answers to the questions that they ask. I've asked questions because I've had council, or I've had citizens call me up and ask me questions that I haven't had the answer to on the top of my fingertips, or I haven't had the documents. And so I have gone to city staff, who are generally quite responsive, but there have been times that they have not wanted to disclose all of the information that the public has sought. Just for the benefit of those who may not be as familiar with this particular records hearing, in the Utah State Records Committee, ruled in favor of a citizen who had appealed a grammar request denial. Pleasant Grove has seen grammar requests, as residents have wanted to know what's going on with their money, what's really happening behind closed doors. Sometimes the city develops a bit of a reputation for doing things behind closed doors, and as the public has asked for information more and more, grammar requests have been the tool that people have used. And the State Records Committee ruled back in December of last year, as I recall, that a resident was right, that they were entitled, the public is entitled, for at least many years' worth of Strawberry Days Celebration financial documents, because for many years, when Strawberry Days didn't have its own tax ID number, it was a de facto extension of the city of Pleasant Grove. We need to be more transparent. VoteBen.com.
So I'm not on the council currently, so I don't know all the intricacies of the detail of the Strawberry Days questions were being asked. But definitely following and echoing what Benjamin said, as far as transparency goes. Any records that the citizens have to do with their money and the things that are going on in their city should be made available to them. I mean, that's the law. I mean, that's, that's how it's been set up, so that, so that we know where our money is going. So anything that the city's part, that the councilman would be responsible for, would be to facilitate or to encourage the city to provide any information that the citizens ask for, that they can. I don't, I don't understand why we would get in the way of citizens wanting answers to questions that have to do with things that are going on in their town, and with their city, and with the money that's being used in the city. As far as it being a private organization, they have their rights and those things, too. So, but from the city's aspect, and from what the city should do, they should be able to follow the law, and to be able to provide the records that are being asked of them that are under their scope.
This really is kind of unfair for the gentlemen that haven't been on council before. So a couple of years ago, three, about three years ago, there were some questions about improving the rodeo grounds. And from that stemmed a very in-depth study of what, the relationship that had been going on between Strawberry Days, the rodeo committee, and the city. So there were, there were questions about city money. And for Strawberry Days, the city pays for the float and the beautiful queens, and there's some trade, there's some trade. We use our, some of our employees for some events. For example, there's fire and police at the rodeo. So we, that, that, those monies were disclosed, and those were the only city monies, the only taxpayer money. So has anybody been to Strawberry Days? Anybody worked in the, in the concessions, flipping hamburgers on a Friday night? Those are all donated volunteer. And Strawberry Days has run by volunteers, hours and hours. There are certain families that have devoted their lives of a week or months, and I'm just very grateful for that.
Question number five. We're going to start with Todd, then Blaine, then Carrie, then Jeff. Question is, what aspects of Pleasant Grove make it a worthwhile place to live, work, and shop? What aspects of Pleasant Grove make it a worthwhile place to live, work, and shop?
You know, we, we really do live in a great place. And, and I've, I've, as I've talked to residents, and as I've talked to department heads and city council, city councilmen, there, it's, it really is a great place. As far as the, the growth and the, and the things that are, that I like about Pleasant Grove, is my neighborhoods, my clean streets, my, you know, those type of things that really bring community to, to ourselves. I think one thing that really tears us down, and one thing that we really, as a citizenship, needs, need to work on, is the bombastic rhetoric that exists on social media. That is absolutely, it's evil. And, and I'm going to call on all citizens to get off that. We have a, we have, I, I started getting involved about three years ago, started reading some of these, some of these issues that go, that are going on in the state, or the city. And I immediately got off of them because of the evil, deteriorating nature. One of the, one of the, one of my, one of my heroes said this. "When it comes to hating, gossiping, ignoring, ridiculing, holding grudges, or wanting to cause harm, please apply the following: Stop it."
For me, what makes Pleasant Grove a worthwhile place is really two things. It's the citizens that make up Pleasant Grove, number one, and this, this beautiful surrounding. To live at the foot of Mount Temponogus is, is just such a marvelous and a wonderful thing. People in other places are in awe of the beauty that surrounds us. So I think we've got to be careful to remember why it is that people moved here to Pleasant Grove. Why do they want to live here? Pleasant Grove has always been a quiet bedroom community, and I think we need to remember that that's why people moved here. It's the citizens of Pleasant Grove that make Pleasant Grove great. Government has a purpose, and it provides services for those citizens. And those play into what helps make us a community, but they're not in and of itself what makes us a community. It's the citizens and the good nature of these people, our neighbors, our friends, and our associations, is what makes this a great place to live. If we were like, pick your downtown city, you wouldn't have that neighborhood feel and that, the camaraderie and the comfort level we have here. That's why people want to live in Pleasant Grove.
What I love best about Pleasant Grove, one of the things that caught my eye when we first moved here was the tagline, "The city of trees." And I hope that we're going to be able to keep that tagline, "The city of trees," and live up to it, honestly. I love every day stepping out of my house and looking at those mountains. They're breathtaking, and I never, ever tire of it. How about you? And, and the people. The people here are outwardly friendly. You can meet somebody in a minute, and in a minute, they're your friend. I also, I, before I forget, I just want to piggyback on what Todd said there about the social media, and I'm not going to lecture anybody about social media, but I've always had this philosophy, that if you have a problem with something, and you're just outwardly critical of it without having a solution for it, find a solution. If you're not part of the solution, then you're part of the problem. And so that's what I would have to say. So I would encourage everybody, go ahead and disagree. Healthy disagreement is good. It leads to discussion, which leads to solutions. And I think that's great.
When I was in college, some friends and I, we climbed Temponogus. We were attending BYU, and when we got to the summit of Temponogus, we looked down, and I looked straight down, and I'm like, wow, that's, that is just really cool. What is that community down there? And a resident of Pleasant Grove, he's like, "That's Pleasant Grove." And it was kind of funny. I was like, "That looks so pleasant." And I felt like an idiot, honestly. He's like, "Duh. It's Pleasant Grove, and it looks so pleasant." When my wife and I, we were looking for a place to live, we lived in Springville for some time, and we were looking for a place to build a home, and we just got drawn, literally drawn to Pleasant Grove. We were looking at American Fork, Lehigh, that area, and we were drawn to our neighborhood. And we love it. We love it. And it's been said, "Nature, I love looking at Temponogus. I love running, and I love looking out over the bluff from 2600 North, and looking over the rest of the valley, looking at the lake, and then turning down south on 20th West, and looking up at, at Temponogus. It's just gorgeous." The schools have been great for our kids. Our kids have blossomed within the junior high, and the high school, and the elementary, the neighborhoods. And I love going to Cravings. I love Purple Turtle and the history there, Taco Amigo and the history that's there, and Firebird Pizza, et cetera and so forth. There's a lot that is to do. I want to bring more to it, so there's more reason to live and grow and enjoy Pleasant Grove.
Question number six. We're going to start with you, Ben, then Nathan, then Diana, then Todd. If the city has all these excess funds, what are they doing with it? Do you think they are really just sitting on it?
So yeah, the city has, state mandated, required, any day funds. There's certain thresholds we keep in reserve. We have, we have money. There's been much, much made on social media and other places about how Pleasant Grove operates lean. There are questions I get from members of the public all the time, though, about priorities and what, what we do with the money that we have, and whether we have the meaningful discussions over whether we prioritize the way we should. It's critical to an organization that we have the discussion, that we have the conversation, that we figure out the best way to use the resources we have, that we figure out, and in fact, for Pioneer Day, one of the messages I shared was about a famous adage that, that pioneers used to share, you know, "Make it do, use it up, wear it out, make it do or do without." We need to, we need to operate in ways that are fiscally responsible, in ways that maximize the value and benefit to the citizens that we serve. And so there are a lot of areas in the budget where we can, we can do better, and I've advocated doing better. I've been an advocate for, for looking at, exploring zero-based budgeting. In fact, as I brought up zero-based budgeting as a possibility at an early budgeting retreat of the city, we had tremendous support from staff, not as much from the elected body, but it was the impetus for freeing up some of the only money that has ever been freed up for roads in Pleasant Grove that didn't come at a tax increase to citizens. So great accomplishment. VoteBen.com.
So I think there's a great misunderstanding when it comes to the philosophy and the reasoning behind Proposition 3. Proposition 3 wasn't saying, "The city has $2.6 million that they're just hiding in these, in these gray shady areas, that they're not even spending, and then we can just come in and take that money." Proposition 3 was, was, was formed behind the fact that the city needs to maintain its roads. We need to at least keep them from going further behind and costing us more money. That's what the study said we needed to do. That's what the professionals said we need to do. And year after year, we keep increasing and increasing other things. There are ways to do it without having to cut back to 2012 or 2013 levels, but there are ways to do it that can keep our services alive and can, and can keep growing what we can, just at a smaller scale. The problem is, when you try to look at the budget to find where these things are, it's really, really difficult. We have funding mechanisms to pay for equipment through our capital equipments programs. And so we transfer in every year a certain amount of money to replace our capital equipment. But that fund isn't enough, so we start using it here and there to pay for trucks out of different funds and other things out of different funds, because that's where the money is. And when they say, "Where is the money going?", it's going to things that the city does need, but it doesn't necessarily mean that those things are more of a need than our roads. And that's what a budget review would show, is how are we spending our money?
So, and I don't know if you've seen the graph that's out there that shows the, the general fund revenue per resident, and it has several cities, with Linden being at 970 and Pleasant Grove being at 340 per person. So when, when we hear about big money just laying around, we run lean. I had a really smart guy say, "What was the most important service of the city?" And it's the service that you're using at that moment. If you're driving, it's the road. If you're turning on your water, it's your culinary. If you're in a park, it's your park. So I just want to say this about our budget. 70% of our money is people. These are, we have, we pay people to serve us. So there is a guy, when you flush your toilet, there's a guy that makes sure that that sewer goes all the way down to TSSD and then gets treated and goes out to the lake. Yes, there are some, there's some operating expenses, and there's equipment, but 70% of every dollar that you pay is a person who is serving you. That's your snowplow driver. That's the guy who's mowing the park.
You know, I've, I've spent, I've spent 20-plus years reviewing budgets and cutting budgets, not from an accountant's view, because accountants can tell a story, not from an attorney's view, because attorneys can tell stories, but from a business-minded view. When I look at, when I look at city budgets, and I, and I talk to Denise Roy, or Deion Giles, or Dave Thomas, or Sherry Britch, who have not seen Ben Stanley in their off, in his, in their office, and would welcome Ben Stanley to his office, and would welcome all of us into their offices, that's how we heal the city. We invite all of us to go talk to these people that lead our city, city, city governments. Find out. I was amazed, as I talked to Sherry, who leads our library, how she has to go on KSL.com to try to find furniture for our library. Now, that's, that's, I, I think that's absolutely ingenious, and I'm glad she does that, but let's, let's try to work together, because what I'm, what I'm hearing from the citizens is that there's all this waste, and I think there's another story.
John, if I may, can I request a point of privilege?
Nope. When we come back around, if you'd like to answer a different question, that's perfectly fine, but we'll keep rolling with the questions. Question seven. We're going to start with Blaine, then Carrie, then Jeffrey, and then Ben. The question is, what will you do to improve the relationship between city employees and What will you do to improve the relationship between city employees and-- What will you do to improve the relationship between city employees and citizens? Blaine.
Well, I think this is somewhat of a tall task here, but it's very doable. And I think the secret in this lies in understanding the proper role of government and having elected officials that will actually sit down and have the deep discussions with our city employees. We seem to be afraid to have that discussion right now as a city. And accusations of, you know, how much is in the budget that could be cut, and these kinds of things. I've seen a lot of budgets, and I have yet to see one that can't cut something from its budget, okay? So, the city employees are a valuable resource to us as Pleasant Grove, as citizens of Pleasant Grove, and they provide a function that we ask them to provide. So, obviously, we need to work with them. But we have to remember that they are here to serve the people of Pleasant Grove. So, I think the way to work with the employees and the citizens is for us to have this broad, deep, and substantive discussion, and we have to be real about what services we're providing the citizens of Pleasant Grove. And if we don't represent the interests and the highest priorities of the citizens, we're always going to have a problem with that relationship.
Big question. There have been, and I have experienced myself, times when I have dealt with city employees where I haven't felt like they were honest with me, and I think a lot of times through no fault of their own. Not that they were trying not to be, or whatever, but mistakes happened. And that, I think, when you are a citizen and you're dealing with someone from the city, and that happens, the immediate thing is to go, oh, you work for this city, I can't trust you. So, I do think that there are things that can be put in place and to create, and I think it follows way back to the transparency thing, where if there is transparency, if people understand that it's okay to talk to you like you're my neighbor and you're my friend, and there is transparency in what they're doing, that plays into being able to get you to trust what they're doing. And so, I think transparency and trust go hand in hand. I also have taken a look at the career, if you go to the website and you look at careers available in Pleasant Grove, and look at what these people are earning. I think you can find a great deal of respect for them.
The relationship between cities employees, or city employees and its citizens, honestly, that starts in the house, starts in the home, respect and ownership. This is our city, right? We're taking ownership of our city, and so, we can't get things for free. We can't just take out of Peter's pocket to pay Paul. That doesn't work. In a household, that doesn't work. But respect and ownership. A story came to my mind when the question was asked of an executive of a large corporation. One way that he would interview potential middle management and C-level employees was he would take them to a restaurant in New York City. And while sitting at the restaurant, he would have a conversation with them, and he would watch how he treated the waiters and the busboys and the people who were serving them. And if they did not treat them with respect, if they did not treat them with honor, if they didn't see them as an individual, a person, a living, breathing person that has feelings, he wouldn't hire them. What's so hard about that, of recognizing that you have value, that I have value, and we both can talk to each other as human beings and respect one another's positions? That's what it comes down to.
As the president of the Utah County Rotary Club, one of the values that we talk about, we do a four-fold test at the start of all of our meetings, is the code of ethics for Rotarians. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it be, build goodwill and better friendships, and is it beneficial to all concerned? And so, those are the standards that will build relationships, build friendships, build unity, build healing of a divide. As another candidate up here made an objectively false claim about my visitation with directors, I think it's important that that not stand. There is an important need, if we're going to advocate kindness and say, stop it when people gossip and misrepresent, it's important that we also do not misrepresent. I understand that certain campaigns are predicated on negativity, that they are against the citizens, against the citizen initiative, against incumbents, but it is not appropriate in a city of ours to be dishonest and to objectively misrepresent facts. I've met with Sherry Britch, I've met with Denise Roy, I've met with Tina Peterson, I've met with Scott Derrington in their offices many, many times. I've been in office for three and a half years. We communicate regularly by text. There's no one more engaged and more involved and more aware of the needs. I've been to lunch with our police chief and our county commission chair and our state representative. I have great relationships with state leaders. We need to follow the Rotarian guide, and that will heal, and that will build unity, and that will make our community stronger. That will work.
Question number eight. We'll start with you, Nathan, then Diana, then Todd, then Blaine. Is it in the city's best interest to give large incentives to all retail coming in? Because of incentives that have been given, how long and what kind of benefit will the city see? Is it in the city's best interest to give large incentives to all retail coming in? Because of incentives that have been given, how long and what kind of benefit will the city see? Nathan?
So, that's a really tough one. Definitely not all businesses that come in. It just doesn't make sense to incentivize all businesses that come in. The way we bring businesses in is, it can be done a lot of different ways. One is to remove roadblocks and be a city that encourages development through streamlined processes and development, that has a layer of professionalism. The reason you give incentives to businesses would be to a large-scale corporation that we wanted as a seed. If you didn't have any development going on in that area already, sometimes it's good to give a little bit of a break to something that'll bring in and start the development of that area. But we've got the development going. We've got the businesses in, and we've got the property, and very many of our neighboring cities are running out of property, and they're running out the ability to be able to give the incentives, and their tax rates are high enough, and new fees and things are chasing them away. We're prime in Pleasant Grove for development, but what level and acceptance do we want to draw that in? We want to have it come in, but if it takes another 30 years, 20 to 30 years, to be able to see the revenue because of that, is it really going to benefit us? It may bring in another company, but if our finite amount of real estate is already taken up, and we've given benefits to those people in that finite amount, then there's nobody else to draw from that. So, I don't know that there's any reason to continue it. I think we've given away more than we need to.
Yes. That was my Lynn. That was my ode to Lynn. Yes. I think we've given three that I can think of. I need a nod from maybe Mayor Mike back there. In fact, we're sitting in one. And an incentive, and I don't, we need to define large, and a large company. So, about four years ago, there were about 400 acres that were undeveloped. And I think, I don't think DoTERRA will ever understand what they've done for Pleasant Grove. We actually, they've kind of put us on the map for health and wellness. The bike park added to that. We, so what happens is, on an incentive, is that you give, on an increase, so the property tax, for example, if there's a $50 million building, the property tax value of that is, we say, instead of collecting all of that property tax, for a certain amount of time, we're going to let you keep a portion of that. So, we still get an increase. We have a very good guy, his name is Randy Sant, who writes packages to make sure that the city, the impact is covered.
I'll yield my time.
No.
You know more about this than I do. I don't, you know, my feeling is, if Diana's willing to give me $5, I'll give her a dollar in return. That's how businesses work. That's how developers work. And in order to, the reason why we haven't, we don't have economic development out in the Grove right now, is we haven't been willing to play. You've got to play, and you've got to be willing to incentivize organizations to come to the city. Now, in the last minute, I'm going to apologize to Mr. Stanley. Ben, I'm sorry. I really offer my humble apologies. I didn't mean to represent, but I think from my standpoint, and from all of us that are on this stand, and even the concerned citizens that are out there, let's spend more time with them. I'm absolutely convinced that if we will get to know them and get to know them better, spend, take some more time. You know, if you've spent some time, spend some more time. I'm going to spend some more time. And get to know them, get to know their needs, get to know their cities. It's hard to criticize when you live in someone else's shoes. And I'm going to, for one, whether I win this election or not, quite frankly, I'm not going to go there. So, you know, whether I win this election or not, I'm going to spend more time, because they deserve our respect.
Well, the reason you offer incentives to business is to attract business when you need to get economic development going in an area like Pleasant Grove. We have struggled to do that for quite some time, right? And right now, we've got St. John Properties that's developing right out at the Freeway Interchange, and, you know, I think what happened there is instructive. St. John Properties wanted to start their first phase of development, and we made it so difficult for them to be able to develop what they wanted to develop, that they took a break, and they said, well, you know what, we're really not going to do it. And then, when they came back, they asked for a really big incentive to be able to build the grandiose types of things that they were asked to do. And so, I think you've got to be very careful about that. It makes sense to help jumpstart business and get critical mass going, but obviously, you can't give incentives to every business that comes in. So, that raises a real problem. Why do some businesses get a tax break and others not? I think you've got to be very, very careful about how you offer incentives. In the early going, you probably have to provide some incentives. I understand that. We have provided some now. We are getting some critical mass going. I think we've got to let it develop.
Josh, how are we doing on time? Okay. So, next question. Question number nine. We're going to start with Carrie, and Jeffrey, then Ben, then Nathan. Can you tell me exactly what taxes were increased by the current council, and why you didn't think those taxes, those tax increases were necessary?
No.
Go ahead.
No, that's not fair for you.
That's not a fair question.
I think that Diana already stated tonight that there hasn't been a tax increase in three years. And so...
30.
30 years. Yeah.
This was the first one.
Yeah. So, no, I'm going to confess, I'm behind the curve on this one, so I'm going to pass.
So, from what I know, the taxes or the fees that were associated or implemented by the current council dealt with the Public Safety Building, and I think it was appropriate, just maintenance of the existing property, existing buildings, to bring them up to earthquake code were exorbitant. It's unfortunate, but it is necessary, and it was necessary, I feel. And then, shortly after it was passed, to hear in the news that the current judicial building, police building, was flooded with sewage and damaged evidence, and that tragic case of the mother who, here in Pleasant Grove, had children, and that evidence was, it was just heart-wrenching to know that we have to deal with that. And so, it was appropriate. It needed to happen. For reference, both my elementary school and my middle school up in Midvale are now gone. It's sad. Part of me is gone. My history is gone. It is sad, but it's reality, and we can only move forward, in all honesty. What's done is done. We need to move forward, and we need to progress.
So, the significant tax increase that I've been getting a lot of calls about and emails about recently is, of course, the property tax increase related to the PSB bond. We saw that passed with about 62% of the public's vote in November of last year, and that increased your property taxes. If you haven't gotten it, you probably will in the next couple of days, get your property tax assessment from the county, and it includes an increase, in some cases, a pretty significant increase for people for their city portion of that bill. That was approved by the voters. One of the things that I've always advocated on the council is that novel new tax increases, a road fee, any kind of tax increase ought to be put before the public, so that the public can weigh in on that priority and make a decision on whether that's appropriate. It was not the way that the Public Safety Building was initially proposed and pursued, but since I have been in office, we have been able to make sure that that goes before the public and was voted on in November. There was a public vote and an increase associated with the rec building that the voters approved. There have been fee increases in our city, as we've seen utility rates rise, in some cases, in situations that have raised concern with the public, and I have certainly been on the forefront, asking the questions, making sure that we explore the necessity of every fee increase. There are some fee increases that make sense. We've increased cut fees when people cut into our pavement, so that there's a way to make sure we recover some of that cost. But, yeah, I've been an advocate for letting you have an involvement in those big questions.
Was the question just property taxes or taxes in general?
Taxes in general.
Okay. So, in 2014, we had a exercise tax increase in order to be able to provide more funds for roads. I think it was about $195,000 on one of the utilities that's not provided by the city that we were able to increase, and I believe it was around 1%, so not a huge deal. The council implemented that one. The last four years, my property taxes have increased, but not necessarily through actions of the council itself. It could have been through property valuations of the county or whatever. I think, believe it was about 7%. And then, this year, we've got the bond for the roads that was, increased our taxes again. And these are just taxes, taxes. Again, utility rates, everything. A lot of people think that any fee that's charged by the city is a tax, so it gets a little bit ambiguous when we ask, how has this council raised taxes? Point blank, we've received more money in taxes than we have before. We're up, again, $3 million. So, the question of, how has this city council raised taxes? It could be argued that they have raised it through increasing property, but are we talking individual or community? So, there's a lot of questions, questions like that, but our council has raised taxes at least twice for a bond that the citizens agreed to, and then through the utility or the enterprise fund tax. And there's a lot of questions, I'm not sure exactly, was that the extent, have they raised them?
Your time is up. Question 10. We're going to start with Diana, then Todd, then Blaine, then Carrie. What principles guide you in deciding the difference between wants and needs, especially if budget cuts are to be made?
So, I think that's, first of all, before I answer that, Pleasant Grove has been managed very lean by councils and mayors... very lean by councils and mayors since the beginning. I, I honor council members, mayors, staff from, since the beginning. I, and because of that, Pleasant Grove does run lean. So the wants and the needs, and I, like I said before, it is what you're using at that moment. Now, so when it comes to increases, the $3 million that he's talking about, our population has spiked. And because of that, there were some, we added employees to take care of those people. We also, but our department budgets remained the same. So we actually saved money while the population increased.
You know, this is, this is a great question because as I look at, as I look at my experience from a, from a needs and wants, in a business standpoint, you allocate your needs and wants based upon what's best for the business to generate more revenue. In a city government, that's different. In a city government, you really focus on just needs, not necessarily wants. So it's almost an unfair question because it's, it's, the city doesn't, city doesn't work on wants. You know, we don't, the city council doesn't say, well, we want this, we want this. A city council should base their principles on the needs, needs of the citizens. Public safety, recreation, roads, things like that. So that's how I would, you know, we got to look at, at city government as the needs of the city, not necessarily the wants of the city.
Needs versus wants. I think this is, is really basic and really pretty simple. I think it's, it's very clear that we are dealing with some wants rather than some of our needs. Roads are obviously a need. It's pretty easy, I think, to tell what services are actual needs and what services are wants. Now, does that mean that the wants aren't good? No. It just means they're lower priority than the needs. Budgeting basics are you budget for the primary needs first and secondary needs second. It's really that simple. And if we don't understand that, that's why there's a disconnect with the citizens. And they realize that roads, which is clearly their primary need, is not being addressed. I need to address taxes real quickly because I think everyone needs to understand that our current council has asked for a tax increase in every tax that we have. And that includes fees. And they are asking for a new tax. So they didn't get the sales tax increase, but they got an increase in everything else in the last, during the last council's term.
I think it's the job of city government to address needs such as infrastructure, emergency services, public safety. But I also think that we need to look at community services. If children can't, can't use a library, they can't maybe read. If there aren't volunteers to read to them and tutor them, they go uneducated. If you can't learn to read, you go uneducated. And that serves no one. It doesn't serve our community. If we can't provide a sense of community to the residents who live here in addition to those other things, then we fail as a city. So we need the community spirit. We need roads. We need safety. We, we need the public safety. We need green space. We need our sense of community. If we don't have that, we don't have a city. So I, I think that you look at all of the needs. And like Diana expressed, it's the thing you're using right now. If, if I need to go fetch water and I can't get across the bridge to go fetch water, then I need a bridge, right? So it's the thing you're using right now. Roads are a priority. Public safety's a priority.
Okay, Josh, this is going to be our final question so we can balance it out. Everybody will have had a chance to answer seven questions. Last question, and we're going to have just three of you answer this for balance. Jeffrey, then Ben, then Nathan. As a city council member, who do you represent? City employees or the citizens?
I represent the citizens, all of the citizens. But Nate, it was said earlier, the bridge between the citizens and the city employees, really. And respect both parties. Respect who they are. Give them honor for who they are and the role that they play. And the concerns that they have. You as the citizens, you have concerns, you have issues, you have things that directly affect you, that you feel very passionate about, and that's very obvious by the division. You feel very passionate. And there's a reason that the council people are supposed to, we represent all of you, not just one side, not just a specific percentage of the population. It's important to get information and to make decisions that are informed on those points, but you aren't beholden to one group. You're beholden to the entire community to make, as Kerry said, a community feel. If I listen to one section of the community and leave the senior citizens out to dry, what does that do to the community? If I listen to another section of the community, we don't have parks, we don't have recreation, we don't have the opportunity for our kids to enjoy this community that they live in, well, we've done them a disservice as well. And the employees, they're the ones that help facilitate the grounds, help make the infrastructure work. So it's, it's a two-way road. But the citizens come, you know, we have to listen to them.
As an elected official, we're elected by the public, by the people. We represent the people. We take an oath of office to serve the people. I serve 38,000 plus people here in Pleasant Grove, and I love it. And that's who I answer to. So it is, is the public first, but I have, I really treasure the relationship I have with all of our directors, the amount of time I spend with each of them. I've been in turnouts on a three-story roof with our firefighters. I've been able to have Deion Giles help out our ward coordinating service projects. I've been able to do a lot of things with a lot of directors. I've loved going with Sherri down to Springville to see her old stomping grounds and to check out the library that she was a part of there. And I've loved the time I've spent with our city employees. You have my word of honor as a Rotarian, as a Latter Day Saint, as a man of integrity that there is no threat to any city department that will ever be shut down as long as I am in office. But we will budget and we will continue to serve the public because the public are the ones who are the bosses in a properly run government. So I encourage you to vote Ben Stanley. Visit voteben.com. It is an opportunity to, to re-enshrine the values that matter, to take care of our infrastructure, to make sure that we're moving our city in a responsible way that serves the public, that puts the people first, that helps us to actually address with real positive solutions the things that matter, and to not, not give in to the negativity and the attacks that do damage to our community. Thanks.
So naturally, I'd want to say that the council's job is to represent the citizens. And that's who they've elected them, that's who's given them the job. But they're also supposed to be the leaders of the community. They're supposed to be the ones that are leading the city and helping to, to represent the citizens with the city. But the majority of our city employees are citizens, so they need to be represented as well. Do we represent them in the aspect of, as employees, in a way, in an effect? We need to be mindful of them and to be understanding of what obstacles are standing in their way of doing a great job, and understanding what things that they need to be able to produce better quality results to the citizens at, at possibly even lower costs. So in a way, they, they do represent both of them, but the, the interests and the responsibility lies in doing the things the citizens have asked them to do and the things the citizens want them to do. So in essence, they, they represent both in a way, but the most important task they have is to, is to, to bring the will of the citizens to the activities of the city. So I think that's about all of that.
Closing statements, one minute each. You want to set your timer for one minute? Okay, in closing statements, we're going to start with Kerry, then Blaine, and we're just going to work our way back this way down the table, based on how we drew. You have one minute each for closing statements. Kerry.
Well, I love living in Pleasant Grove. I love being not more than five minutes away from the best of everything this valley has to offer. I believe that there is a way and a means to have peaceful coexistence between commercial districts and residential districts. I believe that there's a solution to every problem when we come together as a group and work toward solutions to those problems, whether it be roads, new taxes, community centers, pools, whatever it is. The things that make us a community are valuable. And the most valuable of that is our ability to be able to hear one another and to work together to solve our issues and make Pleasant Grove the most pleasant place to be on the planet. Vote for me.
We can fix our roads and our infrastructure and maintain all of our other services in Pleasant Grove. We've not been doing that, okay? We've been neglecting the most significant part of our budget, roads and infrastructure. We have to get our house in order. And when we get our house in order, it becomes infinitely more doable to fund all of the other needs and wants in our city. But we have to do first things first, and that's why we need to prioritize the budget. This election, I think, is shaping up to be a pretty clear contrast. We've got some people who want to prioritize the budget. And we've got some who want to fight against the citizens' call to prioritize the budget. That's a pretty clear statement. All you need to remember, I think, is that this council elected to put $0 out of new money to roads this year.
You know, I'd like to thank, you know, the current, the current city council, the mayor, city volunteers, the, the volunteers that make Pleasant Grove what it is. You know, all of us on, at this table, we have, we have different ideas, we have different experiences that, that just bring a different view to the, view to, to our city. All of us, all of us want what's best for Pleasant Grove. I'm absolutely convinced that no one on, no one on the city council or, or even at this table want, want to do harm. But all of us just have a different way of looking at things. If my view of business experience resonates with you, I'd love, I'd love you to come talk to me and I'd love your vote. If not, that's okay. I'm not, I'm not asking for everybody's vote. I am not a politician, nor will I be. I am the guy who will, will make sound principles based upon my experience to run our city the very best way possible. Thank you.
By the way, we voted to increase $100,000 this year. We have increased every year. We, we are funding roads and we're taking care of services. So we talked about certain things, but we voted to increase 100,000. I want to tell you just a really cute little thing. I got a phone call a couple of years ago from a large developer, and he said, come on down to Chubbies, because that's like the, the best place to go. And we sat there and we visited with a very large developer that was coming in and was going to, was thinking about doing some business. Pleasant Grove is an easy sell. This is actually my favorite part of Pleasant Grove, is selling it. It's an, it is so easy. So we ate, we talked about the good things about Pleasant Grove. He was thinking, he is currently still bringing a very large business to town. And...
I'd also like to thank you all for coming out and to participating and to getting involved. That's very key and crucial to government working and functioning properly. I think it's really interesting that there are, there are people that are opposed to the city being bound to minimally maintain our roads. That, that is not a good, sound principle to, to maintain your services. We, when we enter a bond, we are bound to make a bond payment. When we got into the golf course, we were bound to making those payments. The city binds itself all the time to payments. And we're opposed to minimally maintaining a service that is provided to the citizens that every citizen uses. And I think it's really telling that that is something that we're opposed to. I want services. I love the library. I love the pool. I love the things that we have, but we need to maintain our roads.
So I have an unusual tradition at the end of a, of a debate to pay tribute to the other candidates that are running, so I'm going to take five seconds each. Jeff, I ran into as I was out knocking doors this weekend. I came to his house. He's a really nice guy. I know we have a shared supporter who has his sign and my sign. Nate, I love the fact that he's putting out real solutions, very specific solutions and proposals to solve the problem. Diana works hard. She is on a lot of economic development things. She's, I see her at the chamber events. She and I, people tell me that if they love the way the city's going, they're voting for me and Diana. She's, we're the incumbents. Todd, I love to see new people get involved. I think it's great. I know he's told some people that he hopes he doesn't win. I hope you stay involved, Todd. There's a lot of value in being involved. Blaine, very, very smart, very involved for a long time, done a lot of good for our community. I think you can all tell that Blaine has deep principles and a lot of courage. And Kerry, boy, we have some of her family supporting me, and we just love how good and sincere she is. She would be wonderful for our city. Voteben.com. Thanks.
You know, you guys are looking at us, all of you all are looking at us with the eye of scrutiny. And it's interesting, it's been interesting watching you during this whole thing. Yes, you, and you, and you. You have camps, you have supporters. And that's great. That's fine. One thing that I've really enjoyed, surprisingly and unsurprisingly, is getting to know you, shaking your hands, and having the opportunity to expand my circle of citizens, of community involvement. This has been fun. And we may not agree on everything. We may have opposing viewpoints. That's fine. But we don't have to be disagreeable. We can agree to disagree, but we don't have to be disagreeable. And we can find a solution to make this a community, continue to have a community because that's what we want now and in the future. Thank you very much.
I know from experience, it is not easy to stand here, sit here in front of you and answer a lot of questions. So it takes a lot for these folks to get up here and pitch their ideas and try and convince you to give them your vote. So let's give another round of applause for the candidates. Also, let's thank the Pleasant Grove Linden Chamber of Commerce for planning and hosting this event. But I also want to thank you. Look around, there's a lot of folks that are here. I know you had lots of other things you could do tonight. But I know Pleasant Grove's a lot bigger than what we have here. So you have a lot of work to help inform and educate your friends and neighbors of what you learned tonight. And I know I had like eight questions about Prop 3, and I only read one. So there's lots of questions about Prop 3. Feel free and visit afterwards with the candidates. But thank you so much for coming tonight.
All right, let's give a round of applause real quick to John Dugald for coming out and being our moderator. So just to wrap up, again, we appreciate all the candidates for coming out today. So, just to wrap up, again, we appreciate all the candidates for coming out tonight. You know, it is, as John said, a difficult task to put yourself out in the public spotlight, really the public target practice in a lot of cases, and let your name and your reputation be out there for everyone to, to see. Sorry, just made me think about the, follow the flag. Because we fly the flag to signify our freedom. To have a citizen being able to voice their opinion about how the money in the city should be run one way, or another citizen being able to voice an exact opposite opinion and not get put in jail for it. We live in this free country. And as some of our candidates have expressed, that they come from military families. They give their time, their energy. And I guarantee blood, sweat, and tears to make this community a better place. So, I'm just gonna finish. Sitting in City Hall, in the, in the City Administration Building, is a little plaque which says, "Why is there a G on Little Mountain?" Under the direction of Principal David Gurley, the Groverians of Pleasant Grove High School's class of 1921 voted to put a G on the mountain instead of on the new school. They were an exceptional group with enormous pride in their school and community. And they began their splendid accomplishment, as it was called in the yearbook. The area was cleared, the G was framed, and then filled with rocks and whitewashed. Another quote from the yearbook gives us insight into this group's respect for their community that we would do well to emulate. So, remember this in your conversations, in person, in your conversations on social media, wherever you may be. You live in Pleasant Grove, there's a G on that mountain. And the G stands for, "We were green, but we have gradually grown in gratitude toward our parents and school and for the grand opportunities presented to us. It signifies that we will not growl or grumble, but will become great through growth in Pleasant Grove." And we'll leave you with that thought. Thank you for coming tonight.
Nice job. Jeff, thanks again. Josh? Nice job with everything.
Oh, thank you, sorry. Pretty intimidating calling, you know.
You did fantastic.
Are you gonna be posted in anymore?